There is Phil Carson as well. Usually we do that after the fiscal year. Is it always first election after? Because right now, we don't technically. You know, should we wait and why don't we wait until the beginning of the next term for the new select person? That way they.
Oh, yes, for the.
Chair and co-chair. So we'll table that till next meeting. So we have a few meetings or minutes to approve. The June 10th public hearing about broadband.
You're doing them all at once?
Well.
I don't want to do them individually.
We'll do them individually.
Uh, some.
Second.
All those in favor? Um, see here, the June 15th regular selectment meeting.
Some.
Second.
All those in favor? And the joint meeting with the North Haven Board of Selectmen, which occurred the next day, the 16th.
Some.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Yeah, I.
Don't say.
I would never say I would never ever am. I keep my thoughts to myself. Okay, so approved and signed treasurer's warrant number 52, so moved.
Second.
Uh, second by Donald Cool. All those in favor? Okay, approved agenda. We have some subtractions maybe. This is. Uh, okay, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second you mean.
I'm sorry?
Second you mean.
Oh, second.
Seconded by Pam Allen.
I'm not paying attention. I knew what you.
All those in favor? Okay, communications. We have some letters that have been submitted about broadband. I hope everyone's had a chance to read them. Some for, some against. So we should have a discussion about. Can everybody read them? They don't read them all loud. Assuming. Either not. But we have, see here. Hmm. Stephen Songdimer.
Songdimer.
Songdimer. Um. It's hoping that the community continues pursuing broadband and much of the selectmen. Um, we have Phil's letter, of course, about, you know, hoping that we reconsider staff time correct towards the broadband committee uh, from Pam Johnson, who said that she originally voted in favor of broadband um, and has changed her mind. She originally voted in favor of the survey and changed her mind. And that we should be expect to be spending more time with affordable housing and other basic infrastructure repair. You know, for this more traditional success infrastructure. And L O P Lord also wishes hopes that the board continues staff time towards the committee. And Dick and Holly Young seem to be in favor of the municipal uh, municipal system. In favor of what? In favor of the municipal one system, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You and Sue Martin also interested in the community. Or excuse me, the town uh, continuing on. And Jennifer Clements. Also, she says she's disappointed by the decision to abandon the broadband initiative and hopes we will reconsider. So, on that note, we should open up, I'm gonna open up the first of the board for our discussion and then obviously I'll give you all a chance to speak as well. And Andy included a memo I asked him for.
Let's move on to the backwoods.
Yes, and there's an Amy of a letter from Kendra Jo Green. So Andy included a memo about what, in a very rough manner, what the incumbents have offered, you know, as a potentially, you know, why does I, not why does I, but you know, a you know, partnership with the town to expand their networks. You know, they would require some tax dollars, correct?
Um, unclear. I mean, I mean, they, so what we've gotten so far is two companies that have expressed some level of interest um, to talk further, very high level estimates ranging from $2 million to $3.3 million to build out a build out their systems out here, their network out here. Um, so that being paid for by some, you know, in some way, whether they contribute some or whether the town or grants contribute the rest, we're all of, um, that was just a very high level estimate of the cost to do it. And that was all we were looking for at the time as part of the project, part of the feasibility study.
So your last sentence from there, the town could then pursue grant funds on their behalf. Presumably these corporations have their own grant funding, or grant seeking sources.
Not always. Some, sometimes the, those grant funds are afforded to public entities. Um, we've done it before in the past. Um, town applied for some last mile connections, um, hoping to, when it was fair point, um, to expand some of the nodes they had on the island and increase the number of nodes there are. So, um, we've done it before, but there are some grants that are afforded to government or public entities that they wouldn't be necessarily eligible for.
I have to say that I'd be very hesitant to use tax dollars to expand a private company's network, you know, and then feed control, you know. You know, presumably if we, if we were to write them a check, they also better give us some power over, you know, costs, you know, cost subscribers essentially, but you know, this is that, you know, people want to rail against socialism. That would be the definition.
Well, I, like it says, you know, the action to disallow staff support. I I'm not in agreement to spend tax money on this project. I do feel that to disallow the staff support after all the years, five years plus, it seemed a little bit extreme to me. I, I mean, it's not costing the town anything to have the committee continue. And we did support and budget X amount of hours for the brigade to work on the broadband committee, right?
Work with.
Right, to work with. A hundred hours?
A hundred hours, yes, which is obviously funded from tax dollars.
Right, but we passed that.
Some of it was funded through grants, some of which is by majority of which actually.
Passed that article, or it was passed, voted on and passed town meeting. So I don't see any reason why we shouldn't continue to support the broadband committee and have them continue the research. I mean, it's gonna be a lot of grant money out there apparently. You know, it'd be too bad for us to.
I think you're right. There will be a lot of grant money, but it will come with some, as some matching money as well from. I highly doubt you'll get a full sum of money for.
How do you know?
It may, it may not. I mean, you won't know unless you explore it and afford the opportunity to explore it.
I mean, I think that the points made about, you know, using that community development position towards other needs that were brought up at both the public hearing and our last selectment meeting. You know, those, that time, that's gonna all, those are also going to require a lot of time.
Was broadband one of our one of our goals on the strategic plan we did?
Economic development on a, on a more broader scale and, you know, broadband is included, you know, as like some.
We did. Put that as a priority.
We did, but, you know, I think the community also spoke pretty loudly about, you know.
Well, those that spoke loudly, yes, but there was others that spoke loudly in the opposite direction, but I'm not on the other side. I'm just suggesting that we are encouraging us to bring back the committee and fund the committee like we appointed.
I mean, the committee, sorry, the committee does still exist. Go ahead.
Barely.
I agree, I agree with Pam. I think there are two separate issues here. One is whether we continue to pursue broadband and the other is whether we continue to fund and support the broadband committee so that they can explore new developments as they come down the line, things I can't even probably imagine. And the funding sources for those things. It may be that broadband isn't the thing we want to hang our hat on, but if anyone is gonna find out what it is, we should be hanging our hat on. I think it's this committee that has done so much thorough investigation up to this point, and I would rely on them to do the same kind of exploration regarding broadband if it's still on the table or whatever else comes down the bike. And I really hate to see us just continue staff support for them.
D W, do you have anything to say before I open the floor to?
Well, I mean, what is in our strategic plan? So I still feel that reliable faster internet is important to the economic development screening, but message that I received is that people don't feel that same way. So.
If they have to pay for it with tax dollars.
No, my, the message I got was nobody wants faster and more reliable. Regardless of the paper, if you want it, you have to pay for it yourself. That was the message that I got. Maybe I misinterpreted that, but that was the message that I received. You did approve it in the budget. It was approved at the town meeting. So I would be in favor of approving staff to continue to work on the broadband committee, at least for the next fiscal year. But it also comes back to if committee still wants to continue. Cause some of the communications I receive back and forth, it doesn't sound like there's too much support for that.
I'm gonna open up the floor to discussion now.
One of the questions that I have is, you know, what are the options? But what would help? I think this committee as well as the rest of the town to get a better feel for where we are. If we could really get a detailed report based on what the broadband committee has found so far and what their plans are in the future and what the cost that we're gonna be looking at for the next four months. Those things would help sway a lot. Right now, there's a lot of misinformation out there as to the committee's uh, estimates on things. And I've heard a few and I gotta admit, what I've heard has not, has not run through my estimation. And I'm sure I'm not alone on this. So if we could uh, get a public report based on where we are with the committee, what they have in fact discovered, what they're looking at. Uh, I just think it can go a long way rather than just oral discussion because I just don't see where we are. And the reports I've seen have been so skimpy on details that I would not look into super.
Andy?
Uh, the information that the committee has amassed over the last five or six years still on the website, good. Uh, so the committee, the board, the board saw there was a, a very, I think, very detailed feasibility study that was done through a grant fund that we had gotten. It did cover a fair amount of.
That Andy, I didn't get that, but I'm saying, I think that and I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only person who hasn't seen that on town, I think. So if that is publicized, we could all at least get some satisfaction knowing where we are, what you're looking at, and what the auction does. Cause there's no question. You know, I agree with all of you that we need better broadband on the island. I don't disagree. There's one place that's not served properly. But I don't, I really wonder if we really believe that there's gonna, there're gonna be grants even close to covering this. Let alone, I don't, the government. I just don't see right now with the politics and the vice of politics we have, how this is gonna be part of the infrastructure there. It just doesn't look like it right now. Not unless we go to resolution on it, on the next uh, piece of legislation. Cause right now, I just don't see Republicans and Democrats agreeing on this.
Ellen?
I believe there's $157 million in the state of Maine for broadband, for grants and for assistance. And uh, to um, address what you said, D W, over 300 people answered the survey positively asking for broadband. Some were voting residents and some were non-voting summer people. But over 300 people saying that they wanted, seems to me to a lot, be a lot more people than a few people who stand up at public meeting or at the selectmen's meeting. And it seems we owe it to them to pursue something that so many people took the time and the interest to express their feelings about in an appropriate and conscientious way that was paid for by staff time, by grant money. And so much work has gone on by the broadband community. I mean, I think if you think that they're not interested in continuing, it's because they felt so disheartened to have the other selectmen's meeting and see that they're, that they couldn't continue their work with town support. I think they were just absolutely into Nan in particular. I was sitting next to her. I thought she was gonna start crying. It's really hard for them. So, that's, so my piece.
Pat?
I think the broadband committee has failed because of its narrow-minded approach to community-owned fiber to the home. No other alternatives are, were seriously considered. I'm being part of that committee. I have not been um, a participant in, in the committee because I told them three years ago when I got on it, that if any tax dollar is associated with this, it's not gonna fly. But it was, it was a one-track approach. I think the committee should continue. I think we can expand broadband on the island. I do, I think the committee would need to be restructured um, from the top down and um, during that phase, I don't believe that um, the town would need to put any um, money towards it. I mean, committee has to reform itself and, and rethink itself, like Spectrum, um, there's supposedly an offer from them right now. I don't know if it's, has anything to do with their franchise agreement, but you do as a town have a little bit more handle on Spectrum, um, because you go into a franchise agreement. Is that still, what happened?
Uh, I think it's out of date at this point, but it's not, doesn't cover internet services.
Just cable?
Yeah. I know technically it's still the same thing, but.
But I, I think there's options out there, but this, this, this town-owned fiber to the home mindset has to go.
I know.
Andy, one of the things I wanna comment on, Ellen mentioned about supporting the town. I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of fishermen, I can tell you right now, 90% of the people I have spoken with have absolutely no support for this project. So, I, 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 I'm gonna disagree strongly. You have a group that's, that's vocal in the favor, but there's an awful lot of people out there that have zero in, interest in proceeding with this. So don't be fooled by, by the survey, because it did not, did not encompass the town.
Matt?
Uh, yeah, just to back that up, um, I agree with what Tom said. This is with this like, this, let's say the mine track or this long um, broadband company, we've got, you know, town garage was just built. We've got a project going and bonds gonna go off the dump. In two or three years, we've got the roads that are gonna be done. I don't think it's wise to take a town-owned um, approach to something like this. And um, you like say, I think I'm speaking for the silent minority um, that doesn't come to these meetings and doesn't have time to. They do not want to foot the bill for internet running down mile-long dirt roads to wealthy summer people who could foot the bill if they wanted to fund this project themselves. That's, that's the more resonating thing to hear in town.
And I thought we had discussed that and realized that we don't, we agree.
Yeah, but I say, I don't think we can staff funding, like I agree with Patrick, if it's gonna go on, it needs to be 100% restructured from the ground up. The broadband committee, if it is to continue.
John?
I think it's already budgeted time for it.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't necessarily have to spend that, or it'll get spent on other things if you were stick with the distant, you know, approach, but I mean, I think, I think there are a lot of other options. It seems, I mean, you won't know unless you try. I mean, I, I think I agree with, with uh, here as Pam said. Just, if it's already funded, at least keep researching. I mean, I think like, like D W said and, and Lad just said, basically, it's, I think it's the, the municipal-owned part of it. People probably agree that we certainly should look into better internet, whether it's broadband or whatever the other options are. And I like to have great internet. Why there, you know? But, just how it, how it gets there, I guess, is, is the big thing. And we certainly need a, a group of people that would look into that, cause I, I'm not gonna know. I'm not gonna look into it, so. The funding's there.
So basically, when I'm here, I think maybe the first step before if somebody's going to make a motion to recontinue or reallow staff time would be asking the committee to first come back to us with a complete restructuring and understand that municipally-owned is completely off the table. It's not, you know, it's not even, that's a complete non-starter. And, you know, see if the committee is willing to, if there is members willing to be a member of the committee that wants to discuss other options. And I would also just like to remind people, and I think, you know, you know, there were some alternatives brought up at both the public hearing, you know, Starlink is only going to continue to become more accessible and productive. And those with cell service with U S sailor, and I think any mobile carrier offers, you know, internet to the home as long as you have reception from their tower. That's correct, right? As, yeah, U S sailor is obviously the one that'd probably be best for, because they have the repeater up here on the water tower. Don't, please don't take that as an endorsement of U S sailor on behalf of the town of North Haven, but you know, I think that people have access to better internet without the town necessarily doing it, or, you know, helping them achieve that goal.
I don't think all of them do.
What?
Like, I mean, I just, I don't think everyone has that, right?
Well, I think everyone has access to Starlink.
Not everyone can afford it.
No, I mean.
It's $500 to start and it's $100 a month. And the cost is not gonna go down. They're not gonna decrease their prices as they raise.
No, I'm not, I'm not totally disagreeing with you. I just think it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all, like.
No, they're, you're right. It's not a one-size-fits-all. There's, it's very clear municipally-owned is not the solution the town wants. I'm fine with that. I share people's concerns about all the capital projects we have, the infrastructure that we have to invest in. I get all that. But it's probably, I don't, I'm not sure. Maybe I'm the only person here who actually has to work from their home and relies on a fast, reliable internet and doesn't have it. Has offered to pay Spectrum to hook me up. They were, I was told, no, not gonna do it. I'm now trying U S sailor. My speeds are barely faster than Consolidated. So now I have to go and order Starlink and see if that works. And that doesn't work. I'm gonna have to sell my home and move because I'm not gonna lose my job just so I can stay here. That's my reality. And that message from the town that people don't want my family and me to be here working is a bit of a slap in the face. That's how I feel personally.
Well, I understand your frustration. I mean, and maybe, no, I mean, for matter, no, I mean, for matter, you know, for that matter, maybe I don't. Because I'm not in anywhere near to your situation. I have access to Spectrum and I'm obviously not working from home. I earn exactly $0 from home. But you know, uh, to your point of cost, you know, even if it's not a $5 million bond for municipally-owned, you know, there's still going to be some money that's going to be spent in tax dollars, you know, Consolidated isn't going to, they say we won a couple million dollars. It's still a chunk of change.
Yes.
I don't think you can get that far.
Andy?
I mean, so the memory you had me work up of what I put together and with the recommendations, you know, from next steps from Ken to Bill, these two and was help, you know, provide great input all along. Um, I guess I'll put back to the board to have to move along, but, you know, the board needs to answer the question of is, is, is finding a broadband solution that provides access, better access to more people on this island because the companies aren't doing it on their own. Something that the board still supports as part of an economic development strategy. If so, what direction are you giving to the committee or what, what, what are you asking the committee to research? I don't think any, any final report should omit the municipal solution, only because you're trying to compare. I mean, just like we did compare all the other options in all the other reports. I mean, they're in there. Um, it's part of understanding the total cost. And that, that solution was not done by that committee in and of itself, the select board, you know, worked alongside them to say yes, move ahead. And they thought that was, you guys thought that was the best solution. So for the, for some folks in the community to feel that that committee worked in a vacuum without board support and input.
No, that's not, that is not a true statement. And I'll also tell everybody here and those listening, I was obviously a member of the committee, broadband committee. And when it came time to make a recommendation to the selectmen sometime this winter, February, probably, okay? January or February, you know, of options available. I said, well, if we're going, if the town people are actually going to vote to spend millions of dollars, then I would say that the town should have control over it. I wouldn't, I would never be in favor of writing a check to Spectrum or Consolidated to expand their service for privately-run business. But I also did it with the caveat that, you know, the idea of this municipally-owned project would be, you know, a terrible idea for a community this size. You know, I think if we were a much larger community that had these same questions, you know, I would say this would be more or less a slam dunk, but we're not. And we have some major geographic problems. Miles of dirt road, for example, down long driveways where fiber would have to replace multiple times a winter. So, I'll ask the next question then. What, you know, why can't this board? I know, you know, I don't have the money available, but, you know, what would it cost to have an R F P sent out to both Spectrum and Consolidated to get concrete numbers on what they, what they would do and what, you know, that partnership would look like with the town? It costs money because, you know, you're paying them essentially to do research, are you correct?
I'm sorry. I mean, R F P is an R F P. I mean, if you're asking the company to, any company to, you know, provide, depends how you draft the R F P. If you're asking for a company to do a study on our behalf. Yeah. And yeah, you're gonna have to pay some money. If you're asking companies to submit, you know, enter an R F P that asks for what the cost is for them to build out in a public-private partnership to provide a certain level of service for a certain number of homes. I mean, you've gotta, you'll spend time, more time just figuring out what the parameters are that you're trying to have them meet. Um, but that, you're asking them to provide the cost.
Okay. I mean, wouldn't that, you know, and this board could do that without the committee even necessarily doing it. This board could do that. Would anybody else tentatively be interested in that? On this board?
On readings.
Can we go, is that correct?
I didn't see this.
You know, that, that seems like a logical next step is that we, you know, write up, you know, this, you know, if the committee wants to help, that's fantastic, but if they don't, then, you know, they don't. And I understand that Jen is upset. I don't, I don't really know. Sometimes you're disappointed. You know, and that's, that's too bad. She put, she did put in a lot of work over quite a few years. And I say her, I don't really say the committee because she was 95% of the committee. And that's, maybe that's not even a high enough number. But you know, why don't, why didn't we as a board send out an R F P to Consolidated and Spectrum as the two incumbents about you know, what they would, you know, extending their service and what it would mean. And what it would mean. On our half, you know, on our behalf, what, you know, what we have to spend, et cetera, et cetera.
But even if they do come back, it's still gonna be tax dollars.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
I mean, so if you, if you send out an RFP asking for a public, private. Or private, public-private partnership solution, you're gonna get numbers from companies that presumably are interested in providing that, working with you. Now, now you've got a number you can go to grant doors for, depending on the areas served, I mean, you probably would behoove us to. I think wait until the final rules are in place for new minimum speeds. And then tailor the the grant or the RFP to make sure that they're identifying those areas that are on or underserved. And so it's easy to pull it out and identify. So. As long as you're serving, as long as they're trying to serve places that are on or underserved, presumably you might not have to pay for any of those. Grant funds could presumably pay for it. Now, if it's trying to provide increased service to areas that are by definition served. You know, that might have to be a discussion as to whether the town wants to increase that service level if that were to come in. But. That's how I've under- understand it. There's no, there's a lot of grant funds that are out there.
Yeah, but presumably, presumably Congress will do the right thing to pass, presumably. I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm young and optimistic. I'm not like campuses, you know. You know, you know, and yeah, so yet staff time would be used, obviously, Andy, you're gonna, Andy or Dave, you know, you guys are gonna be writing the RFP. It's not going to be made, but.
Isn't, isn't that part of what the, what the funding is, has already been?
Yeah, yeah, but it would, you know, you know, we can do this, you know, like I said, with many or. But, you know, we don't need to make it any more complicated than necessary or drawn out, you know. And I'll still state the position that if they ask us for tax dollars, you know, to build out their network. No, I'm gonna be a no on that.
I wouldn't limit your RFP to Consolidated and Spectrum.
Okay.
I think an RFP is like a, it's a general government document that people, companies can pick and choose if they wanna make an offer.
In that case, I move that we have the town manager. Begin. Let's say this very generally, begin the process of drafting an RFP. For improved internet access on the island. And, you know, and he can come up with. Who, you know, a possible list of people that we would send that to. You know, you know more than I do, I assure, in your fingernail, maybe more than I do.
Matt, I mean, the further refinement, I don't need to go into that. I assume we'll just be coming forward to you to review or.
Right, draft.
Still review of the draft. Yeah, a lot, yeah, a lot more.
No, I know.
Frankly, a committee would be able to have work through, you know, from the direction of general guidance to the board and say. We're looking for a public-private partnership solution. Let's work towards an RFP to draft that. And then there is a lot behind it that a committee at times could could help support, you know, the other work, so. Just, yeah, there'll be multiple drafts, presumably, we need to refine and make sure we're getting all those things.
Great, we'll have a final draft in two weeks. So is there a second to that motion?
Do you repeat your motion, please?
That Andy begins the process of sending out an RFP to, drafting, drafting an RFP to. Improve, improve internet access through a public-private partnership. I wouldn't even necessarily say that. Let's just, let's start off with starting to draft an RFP. That's what my motion is. Or improve internet access.
Second.
Second of my plan, any discussion?
Will this impact? Whether we ask the broadband committee to move forward, as you suggested a minute ago. With the proviso that they not consider uh. Municipal funding utility. Will this impact that proposal?
I had, I wasn't going to include it at ti- at this point in time, but maybe that's kind of a good separate motion. My motion stands, and it's been seconded by Pam. Is there any discussion?
Oh, no, just if we want the committee to continue, we have to make a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now would somebody like to make?
Hi, I'm sorry. To put this. Letter up, so everybody can read her. Kendra Jo Kendall from Island Institute and just see what her. Um thoughts are on the broadband. Andy can flip that around so everybody can see it. I think that's important for us to look at this.
Yeah, give me a minute. So there's something I added just a few, I've got an hour ago when it came in the email, so it's not in the board packet that it's in.
Uh, just a second. There'll be also. I could, maybe if I lost thirty pounds, it might help. You know, if I put, if I put the bottle of beer down, it could help, you know, it wouldn't be so odd. Would, would people like to read that, or do you have?
I.
Something in particular that jumped out?
Um, just. Do you wanna read, wanna read the whole thing or just?
You have a beautiful voice, man. What was that?
Right. Um, next steps could be a couple of things, depending on how the town moves forward on contracts. You could go straight to RFP. Um, and I won't finish that first paragraph. This is where I think we might get some. Um, ideas. I think, given the recent actions, the broadband committee would need a firm decree. From the select board about what is expected by when and any clear goals the committee should stay focused on. This would include, but not limited to, one, solution for whole community or only unserved. Two, fiber only or all options, including satellite. Three, cost cap. Four, no raising taxes. For the our incumbents, that full number proposed probably isn't the town part. Um, so anyone, I'm not gonna finish that one. Um. Funding with A R P A funds, there is an interesting opportunity to be able to use these funds for both served and unserved areas to an extent. If you need to use the funding to cover an unserved area, to get to an unserved area, then you can use the funds. We haven't seen this with federal funding before. You can also use A R P A to match state funding. And I won't read the last. So there's a little bit of help maybe for us to have. Thought to the committee. Okay, it's kind of like what we just talked about, more or less.
Would anybody like to continue the discussion or have we settled the matter for the evening?
What do, should we make a motion to have the committee reconvene and restructure themselves or?
I, I would, I would be in favor of doing that and without a precondition, such as. Absolutely don't focus on municipal funding for. I would just ask them to. Keep our discussions and our concerns in mind, which is certainly apparent by this point. And to restructure their mission. In a way that they think is gonna be. Uh, most productive for the town. And presumably, given our. Concerns about municipal funding and about as many people as there were that were opposed. They will restructure that mission in a way that will allow them to continue to. Investigate opportunities and alternatives without preconditions. And if it turns out that when they come back to us with. A proposal or a proposed mission statement, it is. Something we don't agree with, then we can address the issue then. But I wouldn't put preconditions on their. Continuing to work and with our continuing to provide municipal funding as regards to staff support.
Uh, Lad had his hand up first.
Curious in regards to that. Would that be a waste of the budgeted time before we, before you guys look forward to the RFP? Should the RFP be done and then have the broadband community resume? Because it would seem like you're coming up with all these other ideas before, you know, if we're gonna go down the RFP route. That a waste of that budgeted time. You know. Discussing a bunch of stuff that's gonna be a non-issue if you go the RFP route.
Just change what I was originally gonna say, but um, to tell you the truth. The RFP, I think it's a good idea to put it out there, but I don't think you're gonna see a lot of companies jumping on. Our, our numbers on this island, as far as service, having access to broadband are too high. For them to. Be confident of the grant money to follow. Um, as far as the board goes, I, I disagree with Phil. I, I, I think that. The current setup of the board has been told time and time again that it's not the right, it's more of a political. Direction than a, than a practical and productive direction that they're taking. And they would need guidelines. Is to not end up with municipal own or tax dollar funded. Idea. I am, my terms up this month on the board. I'm still torn on what to do. If the board continues as it is now, I cannot see myself participating. But I do feel that that direction needs to be provided to them. Go forward.
Yeah, um, wouldn't the best, wouldn't be, wouldn't the best place for that to happen be right on the committee with restructuring and among the members?
That's how it's gonna have to happen, but I think that if there was a guideline there, that maybe, maybe. The mindset would be broke and and be more open to a restructure and a new direction.
I'm gonna call in Gabe and then you, Andy. Yeah, you are supposed to take precedent, but. I mean, Gabe, go ahead, Gabe, go ahead. Okay, fine. No, okay, well, Andy, you're going now, and then we'll go on to Gabe.
Well, I just, I mean, I think that the members of the committee are genuinely capable of, of. Handling whatever the, this board outlines as what you'd like them to work on. They've worked on and identified that after a few years of work and landed on the municipally owned option as. An endorsement from the board of selectmen to continue down that road. You know, when they put all the factors at play that the board loosely defined as to work on, and. That's what they came up with, again, with the board's endorsement to continue. I think if the board puts. A good, the board creates the mission and the purpose of that committee. You're calling that committee to work on behalf of you. Right? So if you give them the parameters that are identified in my memo and Kendra's email. You know, presumably, they're gonna have what they need to do to move forward. If they don't deliver on what the board's put on there as the, what they're asking them to deliver on, then. Obviously, they didn't meet what you've asked them to do. But I wouldn't leave it up to them to, to guess what the boards want to do on behalf of the community. You know, give them the clear steps that you want in the solution. Do you want them to explore? We've obviously well explored the municipal op- operating system. I mean, we don't need to rehash and, and explore that further, because there's thorough documents on that. You know, if, if you're asking for them to present a final report on the multiple solutions again that are out there with new num- with updated numbers. Um, then presumably, you would have that as one of the solutions and a number in there, but. You know, more time and energy would be focused on the numbers we didn't, we didn't get, um, with great, great enough detail, through the RFP of a public-type partnership, for example. You know, the high-level numbers we got are just that, there's very high-level estimates.
Gabe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not entirely in alignment with Andy. I think that if you're gonna take people's volunteer time. You need to give them a really clear direction, but also if you're putting out an RFP, I mean, I think. You know, that like Kendra is a very technical advisor. I mean, I think there's. Plenty of RFPs out there that the town could model theirs after. Um, frankly, I don't know. How many members of the committee would be willing to serve as technical advisors, but at this point, like to Andy's earlier. Point of just needing support with writing that RFP, if, if that is your next step. Then the exploration of further options doesn't really seem necessary as you're putting out an RFP. For, I mean, I think you would wanna define it as, as we're going into a public-private partnership. To the point earlier, I mean, there's so many different solutions, you know, like, who knows, like Axiom might wanna. What might wanna um. Um, submit a response, either UI might wanna submit a response. I mean, there's not just the incumbents out there. I mean, i- if you're gonna use committee time, I think especially after this experience where people feel. The people on the committee, I know personally feel like. Just why didn't we even, not why did we bother because our, our, what we put forward wasn't supported. But why did we move forward with a process that was endorsed by the select board? Hundred percent along the way to then be told that you're not gonna do anything and we're not gonna look at. So I think if you're, if we're gonna use volunteer time and we're gonna, you know, encourage people. To participate in the civic and community process, we need to be very clear about what we're asking them. And I'm not a hundred percent sure we need to ask people to do anything. All of the. Options that, I mean, the committee explored multiple options through that campaign, all the videos of the. The conversations are all online, public-private partnership, LLC model with private investors. Um, entirely privately owned with some level of cooperation with the town. I mean, all of those are out there. If, you know, if you want the committee to further, like Andy said, further explore one of those options or. Further explore multiple non-tax solutions, that would be a directive, but it sounds like you're already moving ahead with an RFP. So I would say, move ahead with an RFP, don't, don't even bring a whole committee back or, or give the, the committee another mission. But you would need to support Andy and whether that's through some people from the committee. You know, offering technical support or Kendra offering technical support. I think that makes sense in the process of. Uh, drafting the RFP.
I, thank you, Gabe. That's, uh, Johnny, you have your hand up.
That's, that's, I was just thinking that we're gonna go ahead and basically requesting a quote from other. Am I, am I interpreting that right? That's kind of what you do with an RFP. From other, whoever you wanna submit it to. Like, I would think you'd be kind of putting the cart before the horse by having the committee come back. And I'm not saying you're not gonna wanna committee. But I would think you'd see where that plays out, see if you even have any interest from other companies. And then if you have some interest, then maybe have a committee work with them or work with. Whatever line you kind of go down.
I, I agree with you.
The committee would be Andy, you know, writing, drafting that up, basically, just to.
Okay.
Yeah, I do think, I do think the board really does need to, like what Kendra outlined, like define. The um, parameters of that RFP, because yeah, are you just going after the unserved and underserved areas? Because you're gonna, you're likely gonna get more of a response, if that's the case, because there's more grant funding available. And people wouldn't be doing a direct competition with Spectrum unless Spectrum decides to do their own.
Right.
Further build up, which, you know, we don't know what they're doing.
And I certainly think that, that, I'm sorry. I think that's a good idea because we're not underserved in the village. We get good internet. Fine internet. I'm sorry.
You're not currently, we're not.
But what most people need in town to use internet is pretty good.
But they're there, but you need to be clear on what actually qualifies you as.
But what's underserved, we need, you know.
That's what I'm saying. You gotta, gotta make sure when you go with these other companies, that you know what you're, where you actually fall into.
But if Gabe, if you think that we get a better. Um, response by asking to do the underserved. Area on the island, underserved areas on the island, would that be the best way to? Go about it?
So. Hearing from the board and the community, I mean, it seems clear we're not interested in putting in tax, real estate tax generated dollars toward a solution. So we would look towards the grants that are out there, might be coming, to what their definitions are, and then. Share that with and identify what the, what the speeds are here and where those gaps are.
Right.
You know, and then, and then through our draft process, the board can decide how our vision at the board. You know, and then, and then through our draft process, the board can decide, how our vision at the board would decide. You know, are you looking for an RFP at the end of the day to to serve a a new. A new number, or, you know, again, it's an interim, some of these things are still in interim rule stages, so I mean, until they have final rules and final speed numbers for. Un- and under met, um I mean, it's kind of hard to guess, but I mean, but let that process dictate, let those grants that we think you could apply for. Dictate what that speed level is, and just kind of go forward with what we've started, I think.
So would Bynum even be considered an underserved community, or do they, would it be part of the island or underserved, or just?
Some parts, depends on which grant and which funder and which which speed you're working at, and that's what I'm saying, like. Let's see what grants are out there, which ones are our best opportunities. Um I mean, it's different, I mean, the state's got a different number than the fed side of it, you know, and so on each grant sometimes is different, so. I think we just need to take a chance to look into the different grant funds and streams that are out there. See what those numbers are, and some places might be just underserved, some places might be entirely underserved. So um before we continue on, you know, with the discussion, would somebody like to make? Is somebody interested in making another motion, or does this board feel like we have satisfied? The question, at least for this evening, obviously, we haven't satisfied the question, but have we taken enough of a first step that we can move on?
And we know that the RFPs we worked on, yeah, oh yeah.
Does anybody else like to make an additional motion? Okay. Have, is it about broadband? I mean, now that we have moved on, because next up is speakers on the floor.
I just wanna say, I mean, I have, happy with my internet, as far as the definition broadband goes, it's just some politician somewhere saying this is what it is. And they all base their grant money around that, and it would be great if it went over a hundred or a hundred for us. But the RFP is gonna take some time, if it happens at all, and I think, and it doesn't need to be the board doing it. Um we can. Town manager can do it, um but I think things should be sued, the spectrum. For a short-term solution, there, they, I I just can think all over the island where they could just run a few thousand more feet of coax. And and get some of these people, not collarless neck, no, but the end of, you know, there's a, there's a lot of places, and if you have a little bit of. Um leverage with them as far as an unsigned or expired um franchise agreement. Something might be able to be done there.
Someone like my father, for example, would be a prime example of.
No, you're always in the situation.
Yeah.
Um but the end, you know, the end of um. Dogtown.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, state beach. They start, they start by just past the coal. Um. But that's.
Down Coombe's that, I don't matter, you know, yeah, yeah, finishing up Coombe's that. Yeah.
Come down from the North Haven Road.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on, um speakers on the floor, anything not related to broadband? I'm so sick of that. Don.
Uh speeding.
Oh.
Speeding.
Oh, speed.
Um you need to slow down.
He said speedy, and what was that?
That's, that's, that's an issue, and if any one of you have a question about it, I invite you to come to my house for. Half an hour or so, and I guarantee you, you're gonna be amazed at what's going on. So my question is, what can we do about it? I understand we have speed bumps, I heard that we did from the town, from town workers that they're in storage. And those, those speed bumps, if they exist, would be such that you could. Bolt them down for the summer and spring and fall, take them up for the winter with snowfall. But right now, I've got people going by forty or fifty miles an hour at my house. A day after day after day. And I'm concerned someone's gonna get killed for this thing going all sudden up, and they don't do something as a town. And so far, I've seen no. Action by police or the selectmen or the town manager on trying to address this problem. Now, you, I'm sure you have in the past, I'm sure you have in the, in the, in the background, but it's not with me, so we need to think outside the box. How can we stop this and kill some curridon?
Yeah. So um let's address that one issue first, speed bump.
Yeah.
There's a lot of roads in this town, would you suggest, what do you, what kind of use would you suggest we make with speed bump?
I would take the, you know, we, we've done enough whip in the past where they had the speed uh. Indicators out there and pick the steer where the is most pronounced and stop there.
That's a lot of area.
Let's get the data and not just have generalizations, okay? The data is out there, because they majored it just a few years ago, with the state where they had the uh. The speed indicators out there.
I would, to that point, I would suggest, I believe, the speed radar, I think the closest to in-town was on the sands. And that was going.
No, that one right down the foot of my hill, too.
Did they put it there at one point, okay, that, you know, because. Anything out of town, obviously, it doesn't make sense to have a speed bump somewhere on the sands.
But in the, in the twenty mile hole, where they're doing thirty and forty, and Pam can can attest to the same thing, she does the same thing up where she is.
Oh, they only get faster when they get up by my house.
And faster at my house.
Yeah, by the time they hit the.
All I'm saying is, I can look out day after day in the summertime, especially with cab, with bicycles on this, coming up that hill. And I see people pulling out when they can't see what's coming the other direction, and all we need is one of these high-speed cars coming out. Someone can make a decision who's gonna win, who's gonna die.
We, we. We may have known to Knox County that this is an issue, and they clearly haven't done enough. Part of it's they don't have the full-time coverage, we understand that. So I agree, I mean, we better try something, if we have speed bumps available. Especially at this time of year, we probably should try it, it's gonna help slow people down. The roads are small enough and narrow as it is, you get the bicycles on it too, you get around these blind corners, like, I'm surprised someone hasn't been killed yet. So I, I don't disagree with that, I don't, what is our stock of speed bumps, you know, Andy?
Uh I believe we bought, brought, bought two that extended out for temporary use, for temporary crosswalk solutions. Uh they're about the same time the state was doing paving out here. Um but I don't believe those ones are meant to, those ones in particular are meant to be bolted down. Um you would want them bolted down, or you'd be chasing them around every day throughout the day to move and put them back in place as they did in the ferry terminal parking lot at a much lower street. Um North Haven, North Haven went the round, route of bolting down speed bumps, and I don't know that they still do. They went up this past weekend, I know.
I. And this is only through the debate, I've heard that, you know, because if you bolt it down, it can also be unbolted down, then where somebody can very easily come in.
People want to find my health, I'll put the camera on.
We're kind of, you know, like, what can we do at this point? It is an issue, and we're not getting the support we hope we get from Knox County, which I know part of it's not their issue because they don't have the staff. But it's not getting any better, and there's more people out here now, you know, because it's the summertime, so.
Is it dur- during the day, Don? I mean, it seems, I don't pay attention at all the time, but it's, a lot of people go really fast up. Through there during the day.
You know, the, the loud trucks and stuff, primarily from like five, thirty, about sixty in the evening. But during the day, there's some of the young kids that just step on it.
Well, yeah, that's not. I don't know, maybe we could do, ask. Deputy to spend more time in that.
But again, it's only four days a week, like it's gonna be three other days that.
You think if they caught a few people and they had to pay a fine, that would slow them down?
Maybe. I don't know about that. License.
Bill?
Uh I've, I've watched the cop that we've had here for the last, over the winter, watched what he's done. And he uh slows down traffic everywhere he goes and parks.
Yeah.
But that leaves the rest of the island, uh where people free to do what they want, he parks by the church and. And he parks in strategic places when school is uh opening and closing, and the traffic slows down, but it doesn't affect. Where they are elsewhere, I'm saying, or if he's down at the ferry terminal, which he also does, it doesn't affect him going by Donnitz. I'm not opposed to anything that, that is.
Anybody thinks?
Yeah. How much would speed bumps cost to get them bolted down?
I'll have to look.
Do we have anything in the budget for it?
Yeah, I think best, best to know how many areas we're looking to do, then I can identify, you know, figure out, make a look at the cost of them, and then we can figure out how many areas we think we might wanna do. Um we'll, we'll have to figure it out, if that's the solution the board wants, I mean, that, last time I looked, I mean, I'm, I'm, I wanna say they ran even from three to five grand. For a set.
What's that, a set, too? How many in a set?
I think it was enough to get across the road, but again, I'll.
Oh, it's not one piece.
I can look further to. Figure out, see what that is, and that's easy enough to do.
And I can just see it all now, though, they put, so they put, we put some in front of, you know, top of the hill, a little bit up past your house. And then. That really makes me mad, then after they get over the speed bump, they're really gonna. Give it to them, and by the time they get up by my house, they're gonna be going eighty.
I know when I talked to the state about it, because there was a lot of concern about up by the quarry, losses quarry in particular. And I asked the state about it, and they said they've had, they've done this before, and they get these requests too, and that's a state aid road, and. They said they're, they're happy to, you know, bring some out, and as soon as they're there, the people that live near them start complaining, not about the speed, but about the noise from, from people hitting the speed bumps. That's just their experience, that was what they were sharing, and and then, and then pretty quickly they find the uh request to remove them. Um because the noises from hitting them was just so much.
Wow, I never even.
People don't slow down.
Well, they'll slow down, but even driving over them, you still, of course, people don't usually come to a five mile an hour roll.
So, so we could ask the state to put in some on the state aid roads?
I don't know if they'd put them in, but I'm just saying, and and in.
It's a fine.
Other scenarios, I don't know, one other thing we looked at was, we looked at it too, when um standby line, we were asked by the DOT to look at. Sowing traffic down through there, and was looking at rumble strips, we put rumble strips in, you know, we said we kind of get, mind people. And they went over them, um you know, and the same thing, that was also been the noise that comes up with those.
The only time traffic slowed down, when the um. Water, the water line dug up, and there was a bump, and they saw, that slowed them down. I put up with a bump any time.
Well, we'll have to ditch holes, though.
Um so does anybody want to? We, we, we understand, you know, where you're coming from, and yeah, we have been obviously blatantly short of solutions. You know, it's the same thing we told Jim Cogswell at our last meeting about up by Peak, up on Peak Walk.
People reporting it helps, I mean, to some degree, I mean, it creates a pattern, it creates a history of of the issue. You know, we are slated to get a speed um sign that we can then either put on a trailer or have fixed locations around town that we can move. I don't know if that one's coming with a camera, it's a free one from the state, the program they have, so I'm just waiting on that to become available, um. There's an agreement we'd be signing that says we have to have it on available for some months out of the year, and it's something we definitely do, uh which provides data. Um you know, help establish certain things, um. You know, but there's no one solution here, I mean, every, every town deals with burnouts and speeding, you know, I mean, there's a lot of places in Knox County where they can't have that. All the time, and you go down that peninsula to Fort Clyde, Dennis Harbor, and they see him headed north. They, you know, same thing, they know they got free rein on the other bank, because they know they aren't generally gonna swing back through, we get the same thing here, especially when the cars are the boat.
They're doing nothing.
Okay, I don't know.
Have there anybody else under?
Yeah, I've been to somebody's select votes meetings, and I've heard so many people speak about this. And people are so frustrated between the noise and the speeding and the rubber on the road. I mean, people have moved away because of this, Kevin Carney sold his house and moved away because of this.
So what do you suggest we do?
I think um Don's idea of getting a, I think we should lower the speed limit, we started.
It's twenty miles an hour. Twenty miles an hour.
The state sets those speed limits, the town has noticed that.
Lower the speed limit, get the sign that tells you how fast you're going, and then I think Don's idea of having a camera, and if you get, like they do. I don't know how expensive it is, maybe the state has it, but they have it on the mainland in places, if you, if you're in fraction of. Something like, if you don't put the money in the trough, you know, for the toll or something, they take your picture, they have your license plate. They have your speed, they have your license plate, they have your base, and you get a ticket. And by the time some of these guys who don't even have licenses or insurance or registrations or whatever else start getting some tickets. Maybe things will stop around here, but it never used to be like this, and as Don says, doing nothing is not enough.
Well, I agree with you, doing nothing is not enough. I think the speed bump, speed bump should be investigated, and if we can secure a camera that. Would take down license plate numbers and track speed, then we should look into that, but I, I don't think that would be. That would not be a cheap option.
And I'm almost positive in the state of Maine, and when you are on the mainland and you see a camera up above a stoplight, for example. It's there to scare you, the state of Maine, I think, still has a prohibition on using those as evidence to.
They have it at the toll booth, though, right?
It's, it's much different, remember, it's a federally funded highway.
Yeah, but what is it, they have what? They have the, they can take your picture at a toll booth, if you go through without paying, your license plate is taken, and they send you a ticket. I got a ticket from Ohio for speeding last year, and sent in my hundred and ten dollars. Avoided every new period for.
And sped away.
But that's, but that's the state of Ohio.
Yeah, but it's just.
States do it. And other states do do it, as far as I know, the state of Maine, I can look into it.
Yeah, but that's, I think, I think I hear clearly from, from what I'm hearing tonight, that I can look into, get across and see what solutions are.
All right.
And see what the board and the town might feel they want to afford to do, um.
Thank you, I think, I think we've got that. It's, if, if it's about speed, then.
No, not about speed, it's not about speed, it's about the town meeting. We had, what, thirty people voting at that last town meeting? That's ridiculous when it comes to making decisions on how we're gonna spend money. Uh you know, it's. I would think that, you know, we might be better off to look at what other places are doing, and consider doing mail-in ballots. On the agenda items that we have. Because right now, you got a, just a few people making decisions, and right now, your logstman. They're, they're, they're out, they're, they're not gonna be there. So we, we need to figure out somehow to get the voting up, because it's not right with thirty people making the decisions, spending millions of dollars.
Well, on that point, so when we had an actual referendum for school budget, for the selectmen and. Uh school board and water district. You know, I, I'm not counting the jokes that were filled in, you know, people wrote in. You know, just joke, you know, Dappy Doctor, whatever, uh you know, I believe it was like two hundred, but you know, two hundred forty-five people approximately. You know, out of, out of, you know, a little over a thousand registered voters, I don't think that's. You might get more participation by sending out a one to every mailbox of registered voters, you might, but, you know, I don't think you're gonna get as huge. I've learned a lesson in the last year, so now it's my turn to be cynical. People who want to be engaged are engaged, and people who don't want to be engaged are not engaged. A couple days after the town meeting, I was at a dinner party with a group of friends, all of them have lived on vital living their whole lives, and will hope and hope to live here for the rest of their lives. And I scolded them. You never show up, you don't show up to any town meeting, secondly, you don't show up to anything, and decisions are being made. Without your, you knowing really what's going on until it's too late, you know, and when you disagree, if you disagree. And. And I, and I just shrugged my shoulders, I don't know if I tell you, I give up. George?
So I actually had the exact same feeling as Don. And I, I was thinking about the natural conclusion of this erosion of civic responsibility, if one person shows up and becomes essentially addictive. Or one person gets to kill a school budget, eliminate positions, uh cut the, the public works department. Do whatever they want, and it's essentially a line item veto.
There you go.
And I think I would strongly recommend that the board selectmen look at the structure of warrants. The enabling of line item vetoes, and how far down the budget, uh dollar amounts do you wanna go to allow that? And perhaps consider what China may do, which is put an ordinance in requiring a quorum. Which is at least ten percent of the last voters of gubernatorial election. And that's a standard, that's in the state, look it up in the state laws, you're allowed to do that. And there is nothing in the state laws regarding municipal elections that requires a quorum, so it has to be done at the town level. So you have the home rule ability to put a quorum requirement.
Well, that is interesting.
And what that does is it could stop government, you don't get the quorum, I understand the risk of that. But it also puts the onus on the town, the board, and the citizens, and the citizens to actually make the government happen. And it's, it's having more teeth, so right now, nobody feels any intimacy, forget about COVID, because that term actually. But moving forward, I think you've got an opportunity to streamline, simplify, codify, and make more attractive.
That is. An excellent idea. I think we should strongly, you know, it'll take research. And you know, that's not a decision, it's just, right, let's have a town meeting and change, you know, but, you know, but you know. That is, that is true.
And don't forget, the, the other way towns in Maine do it as well, which is the decision of the budget and the spending is done by the vote of the elected officials.
Right.
Not, again, depends on the town side, depends on each town's pleasure to do it. Some do it at the ballot rocks. You know, and so I mean, I think those are the four main options that towns in Maine generally afford to do, and it is all over the place.
I mean, I like the idea of an annual town meeting. I think, you know, I'd love to see it back in the olden days, when there'd be a couple hundred people there anyway. And maybe someone could make me something good to eat for the potluck supper and, you know. You know, but. Okay, yeah, but we'll, you know, we'll put that, you know, as I, I'll make, I'll set it as a selectmen's goal, we discuss that at the beginning of the next fiscal year. Which is the day of tomorrow. And if, if it's about the same thing, we need to move on.
Um, if we used to, we have town meeting in the winter when more people are available and have, as you say, a nice, you know, chowder or something with it. So we don't have it at a time when everybody's trying to work so hard to get everything ready, you know, they're, they're here, houses open. It seems like it's exactly at the wrong time of year.
It would require us to change the whole budget process, that's part of it. We'd have to pull it all into handy.
I'll say one reason it changes because the town changed its, its tax, its, its year, fiscal year. And it used to be operate on a calendar year. Most towns in the school and the state operate on fiscal years. And so in that, I think, if you went back and looked. One of the, probably the big changes there was the town's adoption of a fiscal year rather than the calendar year budget. And so that changed the timeline for when you do the budget process, because, you know, we're on a July to June.
That trajectory.
I wouldn't advise it, but it could be.
Alright, we're going to, we are going, we're going to move on, um, to seven committee and department reports and appointments. Annual Minnesota official board and committee appointments.
I believe you're in here.
I am, and I, I'm not, I would like to get off of the. Broadband committee. Sent two emails, no responses, six twenty-five, twenty-one. And that we made.
I did receive two, um, emails from people that are interested in being in the housing committee, Marjorie Stratton, Barb Philbrook. Based on, um, this, there's one, two, three, four, five, potentially six openings.
Oh, well, okay. How, how many is the, the one-year term? I move, we appoint Marjorie Stratton and Barb Philbrook to the housing committee for a one-year term. Seconded by Pam Allen, discussion, all in favor. Okay, so one, two, three, four, and I do have, now you have one, you have to, you can have a.
Because I have a list of a lot more than four people.
Well, Claire Jackson is a no, Dorothy Jeffries is a no, Pam Kipper is a no.
Right, she must have told Diane, she's got it in her notes.
Just participated in the committee the other day.
Maybe she doesn't wanna be on the committee, but she wants to go to the meetings.
We just printed all these names on the survey.
Oh, I don't know what to, I mean, this is, this is a list we have.
This is my list right here.
What's, what's the names of the people that are?
Cooper Brooks, Ellen Ellisoff, and Kathy Young, Mike Stratton, and Bob Philbrook. Uh, yes, the no's, uh, Claire Jackson, Dorothy Jeffries, Pam Kipper, Tim McAvoy. Um, no response from Patrick Salt and Patrick Trainor are all no's. Sterling Green, no, but Patrick Salt does say yes. Patrick Salt does say yes. That must have been after the. Right.
Okay. In that case, are there any other changes here? Side walk committee has moved. Okay, um, I move, we approve the list of. Town officials and committee members and. Better, et cetera. Okay, seconded by Pam, discussion.
Um, just a point, you're, the folks, um, inquiring about processes and the budget, there are four openings on the budget committee. Um, if anyone is interested in serving on that when it comes up again. That's, that's a good opportunity to get down in the weeds on the whole budget.
You can write it right down in the.
Ask a lot of questions.
I move, we appoint, um, Don Young to the budget committee. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Donald Paul, all those in favor. Alright, so now, my original motion of approving this list.
No, I was gonna ask a question, please, on the, so you have, um, stepped down from the broadband.
Yes.
Task force. You've stepped down. Um, is everybody else still on this committee?
My was the only term that ended on the twenty-first, and, and tomorrow anyway. Everyone else is, has this.
Is Lindsay no longer advisory board for the fair service member?
She has, she was the alternate, I've been communication with her several times originally in that capacity. Otherwise, I don't know though.
Yeah, Trishy's on that list.
That'll be on the agenda.
Alright, is anybody, uh, all those in favor? Okay, accepting appropriate donations. I move we accept the donations and place them in the appropriate accounts, seconded by Pam Allen, all those in favor. Okay, committed, here we go, community development corporation committee. I, I did the, the report, very well thought out, you know.
Yeah.
Very, you know, informative and I think, I think, you know, this group could have a real meaningful impact. You know, in the future of this community. I don't know, with everyone else, I would only make maybe one suggestion. You know, and this would be up to you, obviously, you know, at least three members who are year-round vinyl haven residents. Should at least be four to make the majority, and in a perfect world, maybe five to make the super majority, but, you know. You know, they will be the ones who obviously know best. I didn't catch it.
So I, I won't rehash, um, too much here, because you know the background, you know, the committee, you know, there was a key member that. Um, we had a great committee. Public and state, this group was diverse. They were. Uh, a lot of people who had not been on committees before, that's a new representation, some younger folks, which I thought was a key. For us to get, uh, to look to the future of the island. Probably had a broad mix of demographics and professions. So I think we had a really representative committee that dug into all of it. We got fishing, we got, you know, high tech, we got banking, we got commerce. Anyway, I thought it was a great committee. Spent a lot of time reaching out to other members of the communities. Many members were required to go out and contact other people within their own circles. So we extended that depth and penetration to the community further. And the things that came out of this for us were a couple of touch notes. One was the whole point that we echoed in there, this entity should be investing in people, not in things. Uh, that it's people that make this community, uh, and make everything happen. And we've, we've heard from a lot of folks that, um, it's not about capital infrastructure. It's not about sidewalks and roads and broadband and stuff, it's about people working with people and entrepreneurs and fishermen and people supporting their families. And people take civic responsibility of stepping up and serving on boards and working as volunteers. And that seems to be falling through the cracks. So an awful lot of the community members we talked to said, an entity like this could help foster some of that. Then there's a whole idea of service, uh, services that are missing on the island. I don't know if you've tried to pitch retirement there, the expectives in the last two months, but there's an example, or if you have a pet, or have you tried to get, you know, a vet service? Um, how do we make those things happen here in a way that completes the community? Um, and those are pieces that are missing. So, so I, I don't wanna belabor that, but the inventory that went through, what's here, what's missing, what could be? Came out as a priority for this organization, for this entity. Um, and it's, the other clear thing, the touch point that came out was not investing in things that the town and taxpayers should be paying. That was a very clear signal we got from everyone, donors as well as community. Um, that this is going to be an entity that is a nonprofit that receives private donations, no tax dollars whatsoever involved in this. And yet it should not be viewed as a, um, a backstop for the town's. Infrastructure that should be taxpayer facing. So I know you said in there, uh, kicking the can down the road on projects is something we have a proud tradition along the island. We shouldn't be viewing this organization as the one that solves that problem. Uh, and, you know, housing was identified right at the very beginning, as well as a community center, right from the very beginning, yes. Should this organization entity take that on? Um, and the committee and all the people we talked to said, no, those should be separate entities. Uh, because the other islands and the other communities that we're investigating and talking to have separate entities doing it. Like the community center is a separate nonprofit, a housing authority or a housing entity is a separate nonprofit. Does those two things along, eat up an economic development entity. So the recommendations right now are to have the organization focus not on infrastructure and not on housing. The other thing we looked at was the legal structure, sorry, I'm running around here, but.
I'm trying to follow, I don't know if you want me to try and.
The board, uh, you're, you're, I think the seven-member board is a good size. We look at boards and we look at equal structures. Organizations all throughout Maine as well as other states that do this function. Um, seven seems to be a pretty average size for it, allows you to have a forum, allows you to have representation from on-island residents. But don't forget that a lot of the donors are going to leave away. And typically in an organization like this, you have a couple of major donors who have so much in strong interest, they wanna be on the board. And they're not gonna be residents, but you wanna have the community at the core of the organization. So have, we recommend three, a, a minimum of three members in your board, and the board can certainly pick four or five. Uh, and the key thing, I think, that relates to the, uh, second to last bullet here. Is the legal structure of your organization. The original charge from the board's selectmen was to investigate a quasi municipal organization. The recommendation coming out of the downtown master plan was talking about a sort of generic economic development entity. Didn't talk about what kind of structure. We spent a lot of time looking at what are the alternatives. Um, and it really came down to either just a five oh one C three organization, straightforward nonprofit, or a quasi municipal. Started digging into, what does it mean to be a quasi municipal entity? And what are the pros and cons of each of those options? In the end, we saw no advantages to being a quasi municipal entity. Um, all of the functions of your organization can be known as a five oh one C three. And quasi municipal entity created really for things like water districts, sewer districts, uh, waste disposal facilities. And some public utilities. And it's only in the last few years that a handful of organizations have created themselves as quasi municipal. Organizations to do these functions. There are some economic development groups in Scarborough, for example, in Freeport, places where they have high commercial activity. And they have spun off a quasi municipal entity, economic development. Um, but when it comes to the community development, which is a little sort of softer and plezier, you know, sort of thing. There are very few that have gone to quasi municipal group. Uh, most of them are five oh ones and threes, all of the money is coming from private donors. Um, and the, the end recommendation from this committee is that this entity be created as five oh one C three. Not be part of the town, uh, structure, uh, not require a town vote. Won't have to go to court, not have to have a town vote on it, um, would not have a, uh, town manager or board selecting upon the board. Uh, to maintain complete independence and being able to move forward. More efficiently and quickly, uh, actions. But we feel very virtual, the committee does, that the whole idea of transparency and collaboration. Um, must be part of the board's mission. That this organization should not be pursuing anything that is counter to the town's interests. And it needs to have group communication and collaboration with the town, but not necessarily. The other thing that concerned us, uh. Was long-term planning and investing for the future. Separate from a continued turnover governmental organization. Simple way of saying that is, we felt that if this organization's gonna be taking the long view, investing in the community for the long term. It doesn't need to necessarily have representation on its board from the town. When the board's selectmen is turning over, let's say, every board, whatever cycle it's ran, who you guys.
Right.
Um, then have much more continuity, if it was an independent entity. Um, it's gonna have independent funding, have an independent board, but again, the mission, the vision, all of those elements of your organization. Must be to help the community. Not BS, not BS. So that's, sorry, I remember, here's, here's the timeline, what we're recommending is that, um, the committee has basically done its job. Um, you know, it's been eight months, had an awful lot of work, um, and, uh, the board accepted the report and then it's set, effectively. It, it goes into a sort of separate satellite, uh, that the organization, um, creates itself. Uh, we end up getting grants that, uh, talk to board members that are interested in forming it, uh, move forward and solicit donations. And creating it essentially a nonprofit on the island, which is quietly raising money. Um, and collaborating with the town, but operating it. You all the things we recommended.
Very good, you've done excellent work. Thank you and thank you to the entire committee.
That George did an excellent job, so. Put most of it on there. But I agree with George, he said the board was, was a good board, I think he did some good work in. In a short amount of time, too, although that was impressive as well.
And the advisors.
Alright, questions from the board? We all, yeah, let's see, they have a pretty good grasp on what they're doing, things to make.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Road commissioner of the board. I like this activity, I like the activity class.
Yeah, as long as the data is able to get in, inputted into that system we have, you know, there are a few different ways the reports can look, and so this one's a little bit different from. Others, um, kind of shows the task that was done, where it was done, who was involved. You know, it is limiting the, the, on how it gets put in, you know, whether it's, you know, complete, includes everyone. Um, you know, it is limiting the, the plan, how it gets put in, you know, whether it's, you know, complete, includes everyone that was on a particular job or not. But, um, it kind of gives you a sense of, you know, the cost, if you like that, um, of certain tasks. Which some weren't getting, you know, a year ago probably.
How much trash pickup were they doing?
Uh, I think it's close to three days a week this, this is the summer.
Is that just like picking up trash inside of the road?
No, that's the trash can receptacles that we put out in the town park and at town properties.
Thank you.
So this only goes to the empty? You know, we don't have a.
It did. I usually get it weekly. Um, I usually get it on Monday mornings. Um, which is after the board package.
See that there's a miscellaneous for $2.59.
Yeah, the system obviously built that generally to deal with most, the things we do most often. And so I think, uh, that particular miscellaneous was, but.
I'd rather know if it's $2.59.
And, you know, presumably that's tracking my staff time or if it's materials or things that took off the shelf for you. It's just the way that that system.
Can't enjoy gas off the job.
Yeah.
Okay, questions? Okay, engineering board updates.
Uh, bridge is complete. Um, I put a few markers up. We need to put a few markers up, um, delineators, um, going down that boat launch there. Um, if it makes that turn, um, mayor may not need to put a, um, section of guardrail up on the town side of the boat launch. It's a decent drop off there. Um, but the bridge itself is done. Dropped up that project at some point. We need to put a surface coat of asphalt on that that may or may not align with the, um, the state paving project of that whole road. Um, right now it's fine. It's got a base layer on there and we'll be fine for now. Um, so any questions on the bridge?
Only the kayak launch. Is that completed?
I believe they're done with what they're doing.
Okay. I just heard, I haven't been up to see it, but that it was not as, not that easily accessible or I thought it's supposed to have been approved, so.
I guess all I'd say is just take a look for yourself and let us know. There's things that need to happen and we'll have to work, find a way to work it into a budget and.
But they've completed what they're supposed to do, so.
Looked good.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. No, just somebody said they thought it was not good. Not like, say, I haven't had a chance to get up there, so.
Gabe?
Yeah, I just want to say, Andy got some great aerial photos of the project and we'll put them up on the website, but, um, it looks amazing.
Good.
And it's nice to have two capital projects done.
You got that right.
The wheels of government turn very, very slow.
But they're, they're beautiful. If capital projects can be, so.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I'm sure they will. All that granite finally visible instead of hidden under the.
Sorry, we've been fully built for the parentless grid. Is that correct?
Sorry, what was that?
We've been fully built for the parentless grid.
I think there's, uh, the final one, I think just came in this week.
It's that contract value from sixty. I'm just wondering, cause wasn't the bond $550,000 for that project?
Uh, yes, up to $550,000.
But we won't have to borrow $550,000.
We did, we did and had to borrow $550,000. I think the total, the total project, I think it was $555,000, but we did have some reserve funds that we were able to use. That 460 is the construction part of that contract. Yeah.
A similar question on public works. This is for the contract of actual construction. Cause our bond for that was.
One point, up to 1.6.
1.6. And so there's another like 800,000 in engineering costs?
No, so the, the public works facility project, that contract, if you recall, was for Sheridan Corporation to, to rehab model, uh, whatever you call it. The building. And then we had to add the salt shed, which is a separate contract.
Yeah.
Um, and then on top of that, of course, is the, the engineering and legal fees, the land purchase, the all the other.
So are we close to that 1.6 or are we going to be?
I think when we signed, uh, that construction contract, that was the last, I believe, last contract and we had to sign. I'm going into, I think there was, I thought we were entering into the $40,000, $50,000.
Um, pushing.
Pushing, if you will, for contingency. Um, and so I know we, we went into that a little bit with the, with the painting that we did of the beams. That wasn't originally included. I think there was something else that you would approve. During, that wasn't huge, but.
So essentially pretty much on what.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Questions, other questions? Okay, old business, sign annual contracts, cemetery. So this is mowing, essential and other. The ground obviously, any change?
Yeah, I think, I think the only change was the increase from six eighty something to 700.
It was more fifty more dollars.
Yeah.
Supercent.
I mean, it is something that, um, a contractor would like revisited in the future. Um, you know, I suggest doing that, you know, with the budget process and, you know, if that's something that works through, if it comes to the cemetery committee or through me directly to share with the, the budget committee to review, then, you know, presumably that happens. Benefit. But this contract does go through as it has in July to June. And it leaves us next year, um, needing to, if that's the case, you know, identify and figure out what we're going to do so that we don't only then identify it come May. We're, we're going to want to know by probably May, but the solution will be come July.
So is, is he going to submit for an increase before we get to budget season? Is that what you suggested?
Um, it may be, it may be that the board, um, is timely to put out a, uh, an RFP generally and see who's interested. Um, I mean, it may be, I mean, again, I'll, I'll get a better feel for it from the contract that we currently have. Um, just based on, you know, what's been in here before, generally the board.
And in addition, as another more broad topic or larger scope, you know, 52 installments of $700, $36,400. You can hire another employee and for more money, you have to pay them benefits, of course, but you have someone to do mowing. And, and then you have somebody doing, you know, other work as well, you know, when.
When you're not mowing.
Right. So, but that's a much, that's not a topic for tonight. That's a much broader.
But that's something to put on the.
Right.
That burn of the.
You know, that budget season, perhaps. Uh, so I, I didn't, I moved, we signed the contract with the ground.
Second.
Seconded by Pam Allen.
Discussion.
All those in favor?
I've got tough springs growing season so far to keep up with. We've done a good job generally drying up, keep up with the head.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I went, I don't look at a lot of cemeteries, but Roberts, something that's very nice. Strawberry the other day.
Probably by August first, we'll have the whole game.
Right. Yeah, right. Yeah, the grass should be pretty much dead.
I like that salt with tinta on the.
Yeah. So now annual lease agreement, um, Indian Creek. Everyone's satisfied? You haven't heard anything tomorrow about?
I have to read that one still, but, um, I believe that, that still works for him.
Well, we, we have to point now where we can sign this.
If on your end, you're fine and I can present it to him and if there's something that needs to change, then I'll be back.
I moved, we, oh, that one is. I moved, we signed the lease agreement with Earl Hamilton for Indian Creek, which seconded by Pam Allen.
Operator is any of the signings.
Uh, that's, that's. Are you going to give us too much? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Uh, and third affair. So obviously we're going to have a meeting hopefully sooner rather than later between the North Haven and September.
Perfect. I guess what, what.
Right, yeah.
I know. Are you and North Haven Town Manager meeting with?
We will be at some point, you know.
That's right. That's right. Not, not our.
Yeah, we usually, usually I have the opportunity to meet with them in early July.
Okay.
Climb it up with that again.
I moved, we signed the, the George Lewis for the third fair. Seconded by Phil Prossman. All those in favor?
You want them to sign this one?
Yes. Question, what if he, if they approach him, he's willing to change the lease terms to a longer term?
Whether it's.
Anything, anything that we were seeking, you know, through the grant that would afford us the opportunity for grant funds would require, um, years beyond what the board's allowed to enter to review with anyways, the town meeting, the board is only authorized for lease terms up, up to 10 years.
Okay.
And so for the purposes of getting public grant funds or grant funds to fund that, you know, a lot of them are 99 year lease or, or, or ownership kind of thing. So I think in any circumstance, if anything were to happen or work out, that it would have to be a town, town vote at that point.
Okay.
Or imagine if that, if there was anything that could happen, it would probably take a little while.
Yeah. Rockland Animal Hospital. Rockland Animal Hospital. And same. Yep. Yep. All right. I moved, we signed the lease agreement with Rockland Animal Hospital. Second, seconded by Phil Prossman. All those in favor? Okay. No new business. That's something new and different. Report of town manager. Someone.
I'm not, so the first thing I had on there was the, you know, fiscal year end is, uh, last day of fiscal year is tomorrow. Um, I had, when I put this together, um, made the assumption that we might look to close for a few days, just on the 30th. We've generally been at least a half day and I know a lot of other things to tie up and, and figure out. I think the staff, um, with, with the fourth being when it is this year, uh, felt that they should still be open to the public to do all the registrations, especially vote registration and everything else that comes in. Instead of only allowing the drop box, I believe there won't be, um, any closure beyond, um, tomorrow for likely the half day, which we talked about. So we had the opportunity to close out without staying here till eight, nine, 10 o'clock. Um, a lot of, a lot of towns have, you guys, they have a chance to close out the books and the computer systems so that starting July 1st, that you have that chance to get the ground running. Um, on the legal front, uh, a few things is, um, bringing that up, just to get, I think, I'm not sure if all, if both dates were set, but the 80K action, the land use violation, um, with Rockland District Court will be there on July 14th in person at 11:00. And then the tax exemption or abatement request, uh, both those cases are, um, moving forward. The one, the Knox County Superior Court is under further consideration by our assessor on remand from the judge. Um, and for the abatement request, um, that was sent in last year, there's a pre-hearing conference that we'll be attending also on the 14th at, um, just before the, the 80K action. Um, we do have a few vacancies that we're still trying to fill with personnel, the ambulance director. Um, it's back, it's been posted again. Uh, we didn't modify, um, Pat and I, um, probably a couple of others are going to try and meet with um, the new director at the medical center just to talk with them about, you know, is there something there that, you know, we could joint, we try and do that would benefit them and, and our service? Um, see the, the other options on there, the memo that we've talked about and considered, um, you know, just in conversation. How to fill this, you know, one included a public safety director with two part-time positions under that. Another was a part-time director and per DMVMTs, um, part-time director that could be a driver if they were only an admin. They didn't come over the license level and there would at least be a drivers and an admin. Um, potentially they might be interested in being coming sort of, you know, licensed to be an EMT, but then we'd have to backfill the coverage with a part-time EMT. Um, or various, perhaps multiple EMTs, um, roughly. And of course, the other option is, as it's posted right now, is a full-time director and EMT and admin and. I know I'm eager to try and get something done. Grateful that Pat has continued to keep working with us. Um, a lot going on. I'm going to try and do training and recruit people. Um, you know, it's, she's very grateful that she's still willing to do that. So wanting to find a solution, but it is challenging. Uh, public works, as I mentioned, I've been mentioning, Dan and I are scheduled to meet this week to talk further about job descriptions and, you know, exactly what it is. You know, based on the work plan we have ahead that, you know, we need to focus on, you know, what it is exactly. We're looking for again. Um, you know, the three, I think, big ones, you know, three big things that we've, we've looked at are a full-time foreman. Um, which, you know, fills in with what we currently have set up, a full-time road commissioner. Um, you know, it combines the part-time position that it is and, and then, um, making that performance position, if you will, um, within. Um, that I think is what Dan's email was to you a few weeks back, um, in reference to that line of thinking. Um, you know, advocating that we do still have, um, a part-time road commissioner that's able to, to be, you know, able to see in, in between like on the financial side of things to help manage it that way and having someone there every day, um, on the ground, the leadership and the technical ability to lead the crew. Um, sees the value and having seen many different ways the town's done this, sees value in keeping that, that structure. Um, so then it goes back to finding that, that person that throw up a performance position. Um, and then, you know, again, the other option is just we had all, all the descriptions we have, um, and just making sure that, um, the position's filled and needs we have looking into the future. Then a community development engagement coordinator's position is, um, needing to be reconsidered and, um, Gabe has, uh, given her resignation as of last week. Um, so I'll be, been working with her and Matt to figure out, you know, how to, uh, take that work plan that was put together and, um, you know, make sure at least in the short term, we're able to carry on, you know, we've got to reevaluate some, some things, you know, a lot of, in some cases, committee work. Um, and we just come up with good plans for moving forward with that. Um, you know, we talked last on Monday, um, yesterday. Um, my priority to make sure we don't miss anything is the downtown master plan and the over $5 million in grant funds we have out right now. Um, there's a lot of emails, questions, phone calls, um, in the last two weeks, one week, we've gotten, um, Gabe had received, um, emails or phone calls from the two entities. Um, that are potential funding sources, having heard about our projects that are out there. Um, you know, so I think that's not something that, uh, should be left unanswered. Um, so that's something I've been, I'll be working on to come forward with probably some sort of contract solution to work towards. Uh, making sure that that is a priority to continue. Um, we do know that we've got because if there is a starting timeline on the beginning end of this project, if, if we're going to keep the states, the DOT, NPI funds. Um, so we are hopeful that, um, you know, we'll start hearing soon, um, from funding sources that we've submitted. And we, we did hear, um, some news today. Um, it sounds like the community project funding that was being shepherded and selected by representative Fingery, um, has gotten to another phase in the process. Um, so that's, that's good. It still has a lot left to go, but, um, it's gone through two, two layers now. So, um, you know, we're, we're hopeful that, you know, it's encouraging to keep hearing that, you know, it's making it true. Um, EBA, I believe, is still expected to hear something from EBA within at any point in the next week or two. Um, and that was the two, almost $2 million project, so. That, that to me is, is one of the biggest things that we, we need to make sure that we, we continue to stay focused on.
Absolutely.
And then there was a big work plan that Gabe presented, um, as you know, with the budget process that we'll have to find ways to, um, backfill or retool. Um, but I'll, if I get more time, I'll put my head on that. Um, and then I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to fill out the, the goals worksheet that we're in the board packet. Um, I don't need it today, but it'd be helpful to have before, well before the next meeting if possible. Um, so that we can start over the next two meetings. I don't know that I wouldn't want to see it go beyond July. Um, you know, without identifying the work plan and priority of the board. Um, hopefully, I'm hoping that you guys will be able to fill, fill those out.
For these next fiscal year goals, long-term, both?
Um, presumably what, what we're putting as priorities for fiscal year 22, I mean, we have the work plans and the goals of departments. You know, my, my challenge then is of course, you know, with the board seeing, um, to see get done. And, you know, last meeting, the, the airport extension was identified as a priority, a priority to get done. Um, you know, again, we need to make sure that I, I know what the board's priorities are and that I can come up with a work plan, given everything else we have to make sure it gets done as well. Um, find, find a way to add staff who, um, budget resources, you know, that wasn't one that was identified in the budget process to put a lot of effort into. Our construction costs certainly. Um, so just having an opportunity for you guys to really think through some of those things you want to see as top priorities to get done. Think back to the strategic plan you had, um, created a couple of years ago and, you know, the high level view of that. Um, you know, this has kind of helped getting down another layer or two.
I think we'd be better to work on these together.
Yeah. The next two weeks. I can't, the next two weeks I can't. I'm about to hit my busy time, like, I'm probably going to have to work up for it, so. I can't, the next two weeks, I can't. I'm about to hit my busy time, like, I'm probably going to have to work up for it, so. I, I can't the next, I will do what I can on my own, try to give you something, maybe, but I, I, I wouldn't be able to meet separately.
In my, in my opinion, I think it, it, my mind, it's helpful to know what you, you know, if, if there's different priorities among different board members and then once we have them, I can bring those back in and then. And then we can, as a board, you can decide which, you know, which among, we have to identify the resources we have, whether it's staff capital or, or the budget capital, you know, the financial capital to carry out some of these things this, these next twelve months. Um, you know, making sure that those are realistic timelines that we put on them. Um, for example, last summer, we, the board identified, you know, replacing sections of sidewalk on High Street. Um, what quickly turned into far more, uh, something that was not going to happen in this, that fiscal year. So just making sure that we're, we're going, we're going through and kind of identifying the priorities that, you know, getting, getting those, the smart goal. Um, was that acronym of smart, for smart goals, if it was helpful and really going through that whole process. But once you're able to get a few of those on there, then you can come back and, and develop a better work plan for the year to make sure we're hitting it and you guys are getting, seem to get the same things to get accomplished that you want to.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Thank you. Reporting numbers.
So, well, I would like to thank Gabe for all the work you've done for us. This has been just an extraordinary and enormous resource and I'm very sad to see you stepping down.
Second. Yeah, you know, yeah, you did excellent work, you know, making sure we're in a position, you know, for this downtown project. You know, and we would not be in the position we are right now if you hadn't been there to do that work. Anything else I'm reporting on this?
Um, I'm a little disappointed with the packing lot. And it's a mess and it needs to be cleaned up and the Fourth of July was fast approaching and it should be swept. Um, and cleaned up. There's a trailer that's been parked there for a week with traps on it and then traps not on it and then traps back on it and um, just, I don't think Jim's keeping up with the, um, what is it, drop off and get them over and.
Loading and unloading at the town, the paper parking lot there.
Yep.
And that ordinance from, I think, May fifteenth, September fifteenth, they called for just loading and unloading, like, no overnight.
Right, it wasn't, I think we changed it from forty-eight.
Forty-eight was in that one.
Yep. But I, you know, just observing and now we're going to have a little celebration, a big celebration this year and I'd like, I think it'd be nice to get it cleaned up. Um, and then just one little silly thing that I asked a while ago, quite a while ago. Can the town crew just sit down and throw some crushed rock on the end of the little bridge? On the round of, around the mountain.
Indian Creek.
Indian Creek, what, what, just called the one bridge. Um, yeah, could they just throw some crushed rock, let it come down off the bridge there, cause on the round of mountains? On the round mountainside, because clearly it's dry right now, but when it gets, when it get rain, it's really a mess. The crushed rock would be helpful.
Anything else?
That's something.
I'm.
Something else I can complain about.
I'm sure you could think of something, but, but.
Oh, Phil, yeah.
And, you know, yeah, I'd even miss, I guess, even though we did it last meeting. Uh, thank, thank you, Phil.
Thank you, sometimes.
Thank you, done, it's been an honor on the public.
I'm, thank you, Phil. Disappointed to see that the new member has, uh, not attended. Attended, because maybe it's going to be a new member that's a little, uh.
Going to miss you.
It's going to be a little in the weeds, her first couple of meetings. We can always run next year. I, you won't have, you won't have to run against me.
Phil could be right in that.
Don't waste, don't waste the ink. Uh, I move, we adjourn. All those in favor?
We are.
Right, right.
We all.
If you waste the ink.